Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Marchand. Nichols. Blad.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing for the invocation, will be offered by Tamlin Carson, representing the Buddhist representative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of my favorite people because she brings her dogs with her.
You would let me come if I did.
I know. That's true.
Please listen to these words from our hearts. We realize that all human suffering originates from our self conceit, prejudice, and illusion. Disagreement between different people has caused so many arguments. Discrimination between different races has caused so many disasters. Intolerance between different religions has caused so many misfortunes. Conflicts of interest between different nations has caused so much chaos and upheaval. Living in this kind of world, every day we live in fear with no ease. Every day we live in senselessness with no peace. Please listen to our sincere prayer. We sincerely wish that in this world there be no jealousy, only admiration. No hatred, only harmony. No greed, only generosity. No harm, only achievement. Let people of different ages live in harmony. Let people of different social stations have mutual respect. Let people of different professions work in cooperation. Let people of different religions practice with tolerance. We need to learn from you the wisdom to close the distance between self and others. We need to learn from you the selflessness to eliminate all of our attachments. We need to learn from you the truth to resolve the confrontations between races. We need to learn from you the compassion to reconcile the conflicts between nations. We need to learn from you the light to illuminate the darkness of the world. Please bless all sentient beings with harmony. O great compassionate Buddha, please accept our sincere prayer.
Thank you. Tamlin, I would probably let you come. It's just nicer to see you with the dogs. If you're here, there's a couple items that have been pulled from the agenda. The first item is the agenda item 3B has been pulled, the treasurer's report. And the agenda item number 16, the welcome resolution, has been pulled from the agenda as well. If you're here for either of those, they will be back on, I believe, the next agenda item. With that, or the next agenda, with that, we'll move to agenda item number three, is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of November 1 through 15, 2023. C, Pocatello Arts Council appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Tanner Morton and Brian Siskorsky to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, filling a vacancy. Both terms will begin November 17, 2023, and will expire November 17, 2026. D, council decision, short plaid approval for Chatterton Acres subdivision. I told you it was going to be one of those nights, acres subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request to subdivide approximately 2.09 acres of land located at 1712 and 1734 Cottage Avenue into three lots, subject to conditions. E, 2023 Police Retirement Board Elections. Council may wish to acknowledge the winners of the Police Retirement Board election held on November 7, 2023 were Tim Hillibrant and Steve Stewart and Travis Welham. The winners of the board election will take office on January 4, 2024. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda items A, C, D, and E, as listed in Agenda Item 3.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick.
Connie is my.
Connie, thank you. Connie, I'm used to looking that way, and there's nothing there. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 4, is a proclamation. We have one proclamation, International Students' Day. Councilmember Lurick will read the proclamation.
Whereas International Students' Day celebrates the multiculturalism, diversity, cooperation, and friendship international students bring to their university campuses and the cities where they reside. And whereas International Students' Day shines a light on the sacrifices international students make to pursue their education goals, students, excuse me, leave their families and friends, travel great distances, and face cultural differences, language barriers, homesickness, and more. And whereas International Students' Day also celebrates the many rewards international students bring to their universities and communities. We have the opportunity to make new friends and learn about different countries, cultures, and traditions. International students also make significant contributions to local economies and diversity. And whereas Idaho State University has 313 international students from 61 countries enrolled for the fall of 2023 school semester. And whereas Pocatello and Chubbuck are proud to be the home of Idaho State University and the 313 ISU international students. And whereas our communities are committed to creating vibrant, diverse communities where all residents feel welcomed, safe, and able to fully participate in and contribute to our area's economic and social life. Now therefore, we, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, Kevin England, Mayor of the City of Chubbuck, Kevin Satterly, President of Idaho State University, and Emma Watts, President of the United, excuse me, Associated Students of Idaho State University, future President of the United States, to hereby proclaim November 17, International Students' Day in our communities and encourage all residents, faculty, staff, and students to welcome and honor Idaho State University's international students, our friends and neighbors, for their dedication to education, their adventurous spirit, and their local contributions. In witness thereof, we have here on to set our hands the 17th day of November in the year 2023.
I told you I could give you one of those.
I know. See?
Thank you.
It is.
Official nomination.
I brought a little gang with me. We're going to take.
You want pictures for everybody? You want to say a thing or two, and then you have a picture of everybody, or am I going to say yes?
So, those who know me, they always know that Ritter Ross has something to say about something. I always say something, right? But rare occasions like this, I become wordless. And the reason is because I have deep gratitude and gratefulness towards you guys, towards our VP of Student Affairs, Craig, President of the ESISU Student Government, Emma Watts, President of the Student Government, Khalil, our IPO advisor, and everyone, Linda, Linda, you helped a lot, and everyone who has helped us in getting this day done, I mean proclaimed. It's an amazing thing, and I think it's a significant occasion that we proclaim November 17 as an International Students' Day. I'm very grateful to you, on behalf of every international student who study here, have studied here, and will come here. I want to thank you. Thank you very much for doing this. So, yeah.
If you're going to get a picture, let's get everybody up here quickly.
Yes.
It's got to be quick. Don't sit there if you want to be in the picture.
Get the picture. Come on, get the picture.
Everybody.
Does this what we want, right here?
Can we do this?
Are you coming? Oh, you got everybody.
Come on, we got everybody. Stand up, please stand up.
I'll slap you down.
Can you get us some?
Yeah, let's do, try to tuck a couple people. Yeah, go right here. Right here. Excellent, let's do this. Yeah, we got this.
Let's act like we like each other.
All right, everyone. One, two, three. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, good man.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emma.
Thank you.
Good to see you, man.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you, sir.
See, I put a plug in there for your future office.
Good to see you.
A plug in?
A plug.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Now, we will move to Agenda Item 5, is our calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. November 17, 8:30 a.m., Special City Council Goal Setting Meeting. December 7, 5:30 p.m., clarification meeting. 6 p.m., regular council meeting. December 14, 9 a.m. will be a city council work session. Other events, Festival of Trees at Stevens Performing Arts Center continues through November 18. November 23 and 24, city offices will be closed to observe the Thanksgiving holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups for Thursday and Friday will be one day behind. The Community Recreation Center will close on Thanksgiving Day but will open from 9 a.m. or 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. on Friday, November 24. November 24, Christmas Night Lights Parade in Historic Downtown starts at 6:30 p.m. As a reminder, annual leaf collection continues through November 25. Leaves must be placed in a large paper compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Place compostable leaf bags curbside by 7 a.m. on the regular collection day to be taken to Bannock County Landfill Compost Site. City Creek Recreation Area gates are closed to motorized vehicles access until approximately May 15, 2024. Trying to get rid of that pen. All night long. Okay. We will move to Agenda Item Number 6. Daycare License Appeal. Christine Whittier will be present to appeal the denial of her daycare license by the Pocatello Police Department.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Thanks, you guys, for your time, by the way. And after all that, I really don't want to do this because it's all positive stuff. So, my daughter, my daughter-in-law works at a daycare, so they needed a lot of people. She put up the 85 bucks and we put in for it. And I didn't think I would get it because of my background in Utah, but I've been here six years and I had an incident where I was suicidal one night and the cops offered me a ride to the crisis center. They helped me with everything and for the next day, I was able to get, I had just got back into town and the living arrangements wasn't going my way. And I had relapsed and did some Jell-O shots and it wasn't good. So, I didn't get my way, you know, poor me is all it was, and I was suicidal for the first time in my whole life. Never been suicidal any other time, saying I was. I've been in a lot of treatment and I didn't know it was on my record, so the good thing was I found out it was on my record. But I just wonder how they could put it on my record when it ended up turning out good. And it was a safety issue mainly, and it was a courtesy of a ride. So, I was just wondering why it wasn't notified that it was on my background. And I have the assessment that the, I'm nervous, sorry, the assessment that they did that night or that day. And the cop had filled out this paper and saying whatever it was, and it's one of two. And I'm just wondering why the back wasn't filled out. It's like a release of information, you know? Do they have to let you know that they're putting it on your background or, you know, the come out of the suicidal attempt? I left the next day. I'm a grandma of 15 babies. I have two boys and I love them to death. And I'm a good mom, grandma, auntie. My name's Grandma Chris and they all yell Grandma Chris when they see me. And I've had a rough life, but I've had, yeah. I don't know what to say, really, but, yeah. I did, I do have a drug problem. I have for 20 or so years. I lost my mom 22 years ago, but been in treatment maybe seven times. I got out of jail July of six years ago in Ogden, Utah. I had work release and my son was in Idaho and he come and picked me up, and I've been here ever since. I'm the youngest of five, the only one alive. Addiction runs in my family. I think it's the blood because I had a lot of. My brother died at 28 of cirrhosis and my sister died, yeah. They all died before 60, so. I turned 61, I was very thankful. I have a completion, completing Mountain Moonlight. And when I got back here, I was supposed to go to aftercare because you'll fell if you don't. And I got discharged from that for no phone, but I did sign up and I still want to go back. I think that's about it. Did you guys get a letter of my? I was, I filed for Social Security already and I might not even be mentally stable right now to watch babies, you know? They could put me in the babies and I'd be fine changing diapers, but I just wanted to see why and how it got on my record without letting me know. I don't know, do they supposed to let you know?
Okay, okay. Christine, would you stand for some questions from the council? They may have some.
Great.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Mangum?
Sure you do, come on.
First off, congratulations on the completion of your program. Says a lot for someone to complete those kind of programs.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, listening to you speak, it sounds like you're more interested in why this was not filled out on the backside of the form and why the suicide attempt was on the record, but there's not a whole lot of interest in actually appealing the daycare license. So, it seems like, and then I also heard you say your daughter put up 85 bucks, she works at a daycare, so we were just shot in the dark. So, I'm curious to see, is this something that you actually are looking for? Like, you actually want to work with children? You don't want to work with children?
Oh, I'd love to, and I'm really good with them, but it might be my daughter-in-law and I don't get along as well, and I'm scared. I live with her, so I would be working and living with her, so.
So, the other thing that I had heard you say is you might not be in a mental condition to actually be able to care for children. And that kind of scares me.
Yeah.
For you to self-admit that, but then we're here in this appeal process.
I really don't know what to say. I would love to help her out, help the daycare out. By the way, they had two locations and they just opened the new one at the, down at the mall. I don't know where it is really, but the daycare, they closed down. Yeah.
Okay, I've got Councilmember Mansfield.
I was just shocked it was on my record and I have a bad record anyway, so, yeah. I didn't think it would get approved to begin with.
I'd recommend maybe you talk to staff afterwards, kind of find out what that implies, meaning that this is on, you know, in a background check. What does that mean? I'm sure they'd be happy to give you some clarification, but given already what we've heard, addiction is a disease and it's a difficult disease and it's a hard fight. But given the self-admitted mental state of concern for children and the ongoing fight with that addiction, I am not comfortable granting the appeal and I would just like to move directly to make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second. Okay.
To get more stable, I was going to get back into my aftercare and go from there and get an assessment from there, but.
Good path forward.
I think that's a good idea.
That'd be good.
I'm looking at a couple chiefs. Can you visit with her after we make this motion so you can kind of go over why this might be there and help her understand that? Okay, thank you. So, after we vote on this motion, the chief will walk over and grab you and maybe you can have a discussion somewhere about that.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
We do have a motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Council President Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. We'll move to Agenda Item 7, is an exception request to side yard setbacks. Council may wish to approve a request by Jonathan Vincent of Gate City Builders to allow construction of two townhome units on lots 2 and 9 of the townhomes at City View with zero-foot side setbacks, whereas municipal code requires a seven-foot setback.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the exception request to side yard setbacks for Jonathan Vincent, according to Agenda Item 7.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 8, Resolution Grant Application, IDEQ Drinking Water and Wastewater Grants and Loans Program. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a grant application for the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, IDEQ Drinking Water and Wastewater Grants and Loans Program for sewer overflow and stormwater reuse grant funding. And if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and approve the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The IDEQ grant would total $50,000 and the city would use $25,000 in science and environment budgeted funds for the total project cost of $75,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution and approve the grant application for the IDEQ grant as outlined in Agenda Item Number 8. And if awarded, excuse me, authorized, see, it is contagious.
I know, I told you.
Authorize acceptance of the grant and approve the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Resolution Grant Application, Watersmart Cooperative Watershed Management Program. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a grant application from the Bureau of Reclamation, Watersmart Cooperative Watershed Management Program, Phase 1, for fiscal year 2023 and 2024, for the Portnif Watershed Partnership Project. And if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and approve the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total grant application and project cost is $300,000. There is no, no match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 9 as specified, and if awarded, authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Grant Application, 2024 Children Pedestrian Safety Program. Council may wish to approve the submission of a grant application for the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, 2024 Children Pedestrian Safety Program. The grant would fund necessary pedestrian safety and infrastructure improvements on East Oak Street at the Green Acres Elementary School. Total project costs are estimated to be $250,000. There is no city, there is no match. If the award, if awarded, council may wish to authorize the acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the submission of the grant application for the 2024 Children Pedestrian Safety Program as outlined in Agenda Item Number 10. And if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. I keep waiting for you to ask two more people. Agenda Item 11, Construction Contract Agreement, Ross Park Water Slide. Council may wish to accept recommendations of staff and approve the following construction contract agreement between the City of Pocatello and M&amp;S Development and Construction LLC to secure certain construction and related services. A, services as part of the Ross Park Aquatic Complex water slide project in the amount of $559,150, subject to legal department review. Procurement has been funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And B, service as part of the OK Ward Park Splash Pad project in the amount of $288,793, subject to legal department review. Procurement has been funded by a donation from Idaho Central Credit Union.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First, I'd like to commend staff on doing a great job. This saves taxpayers a lot of money and it saves the city a lot of money and it moves us forward with some of the goals that we had designated earlier this year. And so, great job, staff. Thank you for your hard work. And that said, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Agenda Item 11 as outlined, Sections A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Resolution and State-Local Agreement Design and Construction Brennan-Trell Extension and Pedestrian Bridge. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a state and local agreement design and construction Brennan-Trell extension and pedestrian bridge between the City and Idaho Transportation Department and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to. subject to legal department review. The match is for, the match for this project is 7.34%, and funding has been allocated through the Portnif Greenway Foundation for the match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on this thing, I've had a concern over, as much as I like our trail system, about the continued maintenance issues that we're having with some of these areas, particularly some of those areas that get flooded almost every spring. So I just want to express some concern about our ability to continue expanding this trail system. And I would, I would love to see the Greenway Foundation get involved in helping us maintain what we have before we go much further with the trail system that we have. That having been said, I'd move for approval of the resolution and state-local agreement for the Brennan Trail Extension and Pedestrian Bridge, authorizing your signature on all documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Twelve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mangum. He beat you that time. With that, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Declaration of Surplus Property Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to declare the following vehicles as surplus property and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the sale and disposal in accordance with city policy and subject to legal department review. A, 2007 Chevrolet HHR, and B, a 2002 GMC Savannah Van. The declarations would aid in the city's rightsizing efforts for all vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm curious, on this particular agenda item, if this item has anything to do with the purchase of the 2011 pickup truck from P&amp;R Auto Sales.
Ann Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. It is, it's a two-for-one swap. These were vehicles that were going to be headed to auction, and it made sense, just in a swap of vehicles that we have within the department to make that happen.
So are we paying $8,500 in addition to the value of these two vehicles?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Thirteen, the Declaration of Surplus Property for Parks and Recreation, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the sale and disposal and subject to legal department review.
Second.
Okay. I was waiting for Linda to be quick there. We've got a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Piggyback Sourcewell Contract for Locker Procurement, Police Department. Council may wish to approve a Piggyback Sourcewell Contract Number 010920SPC via SpaceSaver International, Intermountain LLC for the procurement of certain lockers and installation services in the amount of $184,842.90. The cost of procurement has been budgeted for, in the Police Department FY 2024 budget. The council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the procurement, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for a motion. I don't know if anyone else has a question.
We have a question.
Derek Daniels, Police Department?
What was the original amount that was pulled from Fund 82, I think, for the locker project?
Original price was $184,842.
So I think the question is, Chief Shy with the police department, when we originally put this money aside, was several years ago, it was $250,000 in Fund 78 that we had put there. And we brought this last year to council and had this discussion about this, and unfortunately, we weren't able to find anybody that could do the work.
Yeah.
So now that we've got some people that are available to do the work, we're moving forward. And it's the lockers through SpaceSaver, and then we have a separate, we're going through the bidding process right now to actually do the construction of the locker room. So, and these are about four months out right now if we buy them like today. So with Christmas and holidays, probably a little bit longer.
So $250,000 designated, can the rest of the work be done for the $70-ish thousand that will be remaining?
No. However, we have put some additional money aside from some other savings that we've worked with finance on from last year, from some extra revenue that did come in, and some other funds in Fund 78 on items that we do not need to do on a radio realignment because we've got 911 funds to take care of that. So there's some extra funds in Fund 78 for money that we thought we were going to have to spend that we didn't.
Comfortable, then, that there's enough money set aside to finish the project?
Absolutely.
Good with me.
Do we have another question?
So some officers are going to get two Santa Clauses and some only one, two chimneys and one. Can you explain what a chimney is in a locker?
Are you talking about the HVAC system?
I don't know. It says some of these lockers have two chimneys and some have one.
The idea is for ventilation. They're just pulling ventilation air through the lockers up to vent outside to help with drying process.
Why, why two different kinds? Are some guys more stinky than others?
Sometimes.
So a lot of it has to do with how the lockers are connected. They're all interconnected, and some of the lock, I mean, the air that they need to pull out, and a lot of this is because of the ventilation, the gear that goes in there sometimes has an odor, and it helps with the odor of boots and vests, especially in the summertime. So it's all based off specs that we got from SpaceSaver.
Is this, can I follow up, Mr. Mayor? Is, there is an HVAC component in this. Is that in addition to the HVAC we already have in the building? Or exactly what is the HVAC component that was mentioned in this bid?
It doesn't have anything to do with the current system. It's just a fan that vents to the outside.
It's not actually heating or air conditioning.
It's not heating or cooling. It's just a ventilation fan that will pull air from inside the locker room and to the outside.
There are sports teams that have that same setup, so that way the smell of all the cleats and the gear doesn't.
Goes right into the crowd, right?
Oh, basically, basically. So if it stinks in here after we're through this, then we know.
Careful doing laps around the building. There's one spot you're going to want to avoid.
That's right.
Can we say that it vents that way?
Designate the vents fan. Did you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I was going to make a motion.
Okay, you had a question.
I have one more, I have a comment, though. Let's, anyway, I think this is good. Walking through your locker room, this is needed, because you guys, everything is dilapidated in there, and you guys needed a facelift. I wish we could give you more space, but this is great, so.
They're over 30 years old. They've lived their life.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Lurick?
So I move that we approve the Piggyback Sourcewell Contract for Locker Procurement for the Police Department as specified in Agenda Item 14, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the procurement, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15, Dark Horse Data Analytics Contract Fire Department. Council may wish to approve a contract with Dark Horse Data Analytics to provide predictive modeling and data analytics for, of the Pocatello Fire Department and Bannock County Ambulance District reported data. Funds for the implementation for the program are available in Fund 78, and ongoing expenses will be included in the appropriate operating budgets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the police chief to come up and talk to us about the negotiations he's had with the county and the status of.
Police or fire?
Not, not, my fire chief, I'm sorry. Fire chief. Sorry, Ryan.
I can assure you the police chief would come up and make an argument.
Mayor and councilmembers, Ryan O'Hern, Fire Department.
The, we talked about this last week or the week before, and we talked about doing this subject to county participation. Could you tell us the status of that?
So I spoke with the county on Tuesday, and we discussed using a fund balance from FY 23 to execute the county's portion of this project, and they approved that. However, last night, we discovered that we had overestimated our fund balance, and we had overlooked a credit earlier in the year. And so that fund balance is no longer there, and so even though the commissioners were supportive and voted to support this project, I have to go back to them next week and ask for a different mechanism of funding. And I'm on their agenda for next Tuesday.
For Tuesday.
So, Mr. Mayor, based on that discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Dark Horse Data Analytics Contract for the Fire Department, subject to county participation as was earlier expected.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And we're good. That's a, we can make that motion, subject to?
We can. I would suggest maybe a little more specificity, other than subject to earlier as expected, just so that it's clear on the record.
Make a motion to approve the Dark Horse Data Analytics Contract for the Fire Department, subject to the county's participation of $35,000, as was expected earlier.
Can I, can I just add Bannock County and Bannock County Ambulance District?
Yes, yes, yes.
In that, that will be a hangup for the, and it should be for them. Okay. Thank you. You okay with that amendment?
I have one question.
Yes.
$35,000, is that the initial?
So the initial implementation fee is $50,000.
Okay.
So we would split that 50/50 between the Amos District and the city.
Yep.
So 25 for each agency. And then the first year's participation is a subscription fee of $20,000, so $10,000 per city and district, for a total of $35,000 for each agency in the first year of implementation.
How long are we committing to with this contract?
This is a five-year contract. It does have a $20,000 annual subscription. It does have a termination clause that we can exit the contract at any time, should we choose. But it is written as a five-year contract.
I'd like to make an amendment to President Cheatham's motion, if he'll accept it, to include the five-year commitment from the county as well, not just the initial $35,000. I don't know if that was specified. Is it, are we asking the county for that, or no?
Well, we haven't built FY 25 budget right now, and so I, the reason that we put a termination clause in the contract was so that we could exit the contract if either side wanted to execute, or to get out or to not fund it further. And so.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to point out that the county cannot, we cannot bind another taxing district beyond what they do today.
Sure. So my, well, let me just clarify real fast. Was the county, was the county going to commit to the five years?
I think they're curious to see what data we get from this.
Okay.
I'm very optimistic that once we see the product and we start using the information, that we can continue it, but I'm not going to commit anybody to a trajectory.
But our termination clause, if the county decides after year one that they don't want to fund half, we can make the decision then to terminate with no penalty.
Correct. We are, we would be the contractor in this case, or the, we would have the control of the contract.
I'm good, then. Never mind. I thought county was signing their own separate agreement, and that was my impression from the work session, so.
No.
Thank you for the clarification. I'll withdraw that amendment.
Okay. Is there a termination cost?
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16 has been pulled from the agenda, so we'll move to Agenda Item 17, An Ordnance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning Regulations. Amending Chapter 17.01, General Provisions 17.02, Land Use Decisions 17.03, Zoning Districts 17.04, Overlay Areas 17.05, Development Standards and 17.06, Special Use Standards to Remove Redundancies Provided, Provide Clarity and Improve Function and Title. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilmember, yes. Go ahead.
I, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 17, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Thank you, Councilmember Mansfield.
You almost still didn't get it.
Councilmember Mangum?
Second.
Thank you. Jared, would you, oh, Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordnance of the City of Pocatello and Municipal Corporation of Idaho, amending sections of Title 17 zoning regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, specifically amending Chapter 17.01, General Provisions 17.02, Land Use Decisions 17.03, Zoning Districts 17.04, Overlay Areas 17.05, Development Standards and 17.06, Special Use Standards, to remove redundancies, provide clarity and improve the function of the title, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 18, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Taisom?
Nikki Taisom, General Delivery Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. We all stated the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of this meeting, and we pledged it as a Christian constitutional republic, that we, the people, is sovereignty under our God, our Father in Heaven. At the beginning of this meeting, we did not offer prayer to our Father in Heaven, and I call on the intervention and guidance of our Father in Heaven, in the name of Jesus only, that His will be done. And also in our Constitution and in our preamble, we declare that we, the people, are the sovereignty. We seek to be united and indivisible, liberty and justice for all, and ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare, and do secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity. And we do ordain the Constitution as supreme law of this land, as it was established by our God, our Father in Heaven, as a sacred document based on His just and holy laws. I am calling on you, as a body of public servants, as well as our officers, to uphold, obey and defend that to very down of your lives. We are in greatest danger we've ever been in a nation, even in this city council. You have placed the center international, you and Pocatello's childcare. I've taken a big, big stand on the child trafficking in this town, as well as satanic rituals involving babies and children being butchered, as well as the drug trade and alcohol and tobacco and vape and porn and lotteries and other issues that are compromising our health and safety, our children, our families, as the foundation of society. Our freedom and independence and virtue and honor as a nation and a people, and our independence and our unity is no longer intact. It's a sacred blessing we've been given to be born in this country, and you, as public servants, have a sacred role. And we, as a people as whole, are about to celebrate Thanksgiving to our God for that blessing and the blessings we continue to receive from Him. And we are divided and indivisible when we pray to and obey Him, and we have chaos when we don't. And that is my concern with what I see on the streets, what I see and experience when I'm in jail. I don't like being out on the streets at night. I don't like being in the jail. I try and seek and establish good and right everywhere I go, and based on what we, as a nation, stand for. And our families are not healthy and happy. Our city and town are not healthy and prosperous. And I seek peace and Zion for all creation, so does my family. for all creation. So does my family. We are under a lot of harassment retaliation for it. And I seek for you, to every decision be based upon praying to and obeying our Father in heaven in the name of Jesus only and the power that he gave us and that no child is ever offended or turned away, as Jesus taught and commanded. When you make your decisions based on those three principles and truths, we will be in the right, we will have happiness, health and prosperity and peace and happiness and it will affect globally.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nikki. With that, Nikki was the only one that signed up for, the only one signed up to speak. So with that, thank you very much, council, for being here today. We are adjourned.